2017, at this time can we have the roll call please?
Councilmember DeRocet is absent. Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here.
Next we will have the invocation by Pastor Nathan Haley for the Victory Assembly of God, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity to gather here this evening. Once again, thank you for everyone here that's present. I pray that as business is conducted tonight that it would go smoothly. Thank you for the great things you're doing in this city, for things that are being accomplished, things that are being done. I thank you for the things that happen behind the scenes that most people aren't aware of. I pray that as things go forth tonight, God, that you would be the center of it in all we say and we do. Most of all, we pray for the continued peace and prosperity here in this great city. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance, teeth of the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible for the liberty and justice.
Thank you Pastor. This evening we have no presentations, so we'll move to Citizens Communication to the Council on Matters Not Included on the Agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Leonard Shepherd, 2841 Fowler Road, number 71. I am amazed. I have to change the name from Old Mattress Avenue back to Moffett. They actually came and picked up half a dozen or more mattresses that were out on the side of the road on Moffett. What a mess. However, we have some of the most despicable looking stuff. I can't even remember the name of the road. If you come off of service and follow around the freeway, that El Camino has got some of the crappiest stuff. I mean, it's terrible. And people think, evidently, they don't care because it's there. And I don't know if there's anything this city can even do about it, because it's going to take 150 of those garbage trucks to just clean it up, get it back to where it should be. But anyway, Series Pride is kind of low again. I've noticed other places in Series that, you know, if you have a nice house, wouldn't you keep your yard nice? I want everybody to go drive by Councilmember Lane's house. He even puts out effort just before he comes to this meeting. I saw him this evening on our way. He was sweating and, but, he's got the jewel of Moffett. And then everybody's, I've been hearing people complain about how hot it is. Oh my God, we're all going to die. It's so darn hot. 1963, I was 20 years old. I've lived in the San Joaquin Valley all of my life. And at age 20, 1963, there was 10 days straight in July that the temperature never dropped below 100 degrees. There was 119, 110, 120, and it was that way all summer long. What's the difference? We're doing it again. History repeats itself. I'm sorry, I am not a climate change denier. The climate is changing, but it does it about every 40 or 50 years, it changes. So, I just put up with it. But, I just hope the citizens of Siri get together and achieve to clean up our city. But, I don't know. Thank you.
Don Donaldson, 2305 Joy Avenue. Before I get started, I'd like to thank somebody, the Burrow Condit. 35, 36 years ago, he's the one that gave me Art Maylie, Jim Marshall, Burrow Condit, Joanne Borges, Kathy Casey, and Paul Caruso, gave me the basketball program in Series to get started. And if it hadn't have been for him pushing and the school board, and he was school board president, and he got me the gymnasium over at May Hensley. Before DeVicchio Rudd and Cambria and Limpke and everybody started hassling me for $40. And I bought the, I can bring all the tax papers in if you guys would like to see them. And Burrow said, if you let the kids play that can't pay, I'll let you have the gymnasium. What a great deal that is, huh? Now we had 200 kids playing basketball for $40. And most of you have kids or had kids that's playing in the program. But now there's no more 200 kids playing basketball. And I asked you three or four times, Mr. Viera, how much they paid for them, for the person to run, and $13 an hour he gets to run that program. I didn't get a dime. And I'll be the first person that'll stand in line if you get a polygraph test and bring it right here, and I'll be the first one that steps in. But I want everybody else to step in too. I got a lot of people that I would like to step in to ask them if they took any money from the kids. 34 years, I ran a program as honest as I possibly, and now then I have to tell the truth because Mr. Condit, his dad just saved me two weeks ago. He just prayed for me. So, now I have to tell the truth. But I would tell the truth about the kids anyway. Ran a basket, ran a soccer, ran a flag football program for $7. $5 were the insurance, $2 to buy, and everybody had a good time out there until a city employees, Gatlin and Jones, is wanting to take it over. Well, they took it over for one year, so their kids left and they left too. No more. And here's something else. Finally, after five years of hassling Azavito, the city manager wrote me a nice letter. I'm not going to read it because I got a shot in my eye, 86 shots in this eye, and a $2 pair of Walmart glasses. Probably can't see half of it, but he apologized to me for having Mr. Azavito with the wife, having cancer, coming to the door and telling her that they're going to move people out of my house if I don't move the electric. And then we found out that the electric was okay. And then Louis Arallo, we had, we had big meetings on this when he was the mayor of Series. When he was the mayor of Series, we had this whenever we was building the skate park about motorhomes and trailers and everything else. And the one right there on Moffett, and, not Moffett, but Rose and Bluebird, he parks his trailer sideways. You can stop and ask him, Mike. Stop and talk to him about what Louis Arallo and everybody and all of us, and even Rob said that he didn't want concrete half of the yard, 50% of it can't be. So, we went through all this, and then I have Azavito coming up and saying, you can't have two motorhomes. Well, I didn't have two motorhomes. But anyway, I got a real nice letter from Mr. Toby Wells apologizing because he harassed the wife and I for five years. I built a two-story there, and I got a permit to do it. I re-roofed my houses and I got permits to do it. I changed all my electrical, I got permits to do it. And it was my wife's job to clean the yard, keep the swimming pool. I put the swimming pool in, it was her job to keep it. So now she can't do it, and I have to do it, and I am not a good, so. Anyway, I've got my chairs out, lawn chairs, and every morning Gunner and I, we go out there, and I eat cereal there and drink my coffee and read my paper, and Gunner runs around in the front yard. I've got things just like out here in the back where people go out there and smoke, I guess, if they, that's my yard. That's where I live. So, that's, and now then, Gunner and I walks down the park and we see all these radio towers.
Don, can I, we got to the five minutes, can I kind of maybe wrap up your comments?
Okay. Linda, would you look at the D L and C of them radio towers and safety of them radio towers? I looked up radio towers, cell phone towers, and you're supposed to be 1,300 feet away. You're supposed to be, seven out of nine people in this one community come down with cancer. Find out how much them kids, Carol Fowler, how far they should be away from them radio towers, cell phone towers. I'd like that to be. And then I would like to have somebody investigate the El Camino and Don Pedro, that deal there, because I put, I put electrical panels in that, I don't know, apartment buildings in there, they're 14 by 16 electric, and it sold for $660,000. Do the paper trail on that for me, Mike, and see when that sold before and how much they got for that. I'm not satisfied with this. I'm not satisfied with the paper here either. I'm not satisfied with it. $360,000 or $340,000 for the, is that correct? How much money he makes a year? It's $318,000?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with what you're.
The city manager.
No, the city manager doesn't make 300, I'm sure he would love to make 318.
Well, it's right here in the paper.
You're reading the department line. That's the city manager department budget, not city managers.
Well, that's not what it says here.
Yeah, city managers, and it's all departments. Every item listed there is the department budget.
We have to put this in layman's terms and tell the people, because whenever people see this and they didn't go to college, they don't understand this. I don't understand, I didn't understand it. Different people, and even the city staff makes $34,000 a year. Did you see this? You guys don't make $34,000 a year, do you?
No, we don't.
No. Well, why is it in here?
That's, it's the staff, we're not considered the city staff.
Again, you're referring to a report that was put out by the newspaper that listed the departments on a by-department basis of what the allocation in the annual budget.
Well, I just look at it like this. It's very hard to tell the police and the firemen that we can't give them a raise and everything else whenever the city manager's making $318,000 a year.
The city manager's not making that.
Do you understand what I mean? I mean, I think, taking care of them.
Thank you, Don. Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the Council on a non-agenda item? Okay. Well, that will move to board, appointments to boards and commissions. We have two items this evening. The first one is the council designation of a voting delegate to represent the city of Series at the Annual League of California Cities Conference from September 13th to the 15th, 2017. Mr. Wells?
Annual exercise here as we prepare to attend the annual conference in September. This exercise for the council is to pick someone who can vote on legislative matters for the league. In the past, the council has made a determination based on who's attending the conference, so we just need council to designate someone to attend. We're kind of looking at the guy who normally does that based on.
Mr. Lane, you still interested?
You know, Councilman, no, Councilman Rhino, I want to stay for that. I got to stay anyway, so, I'll do it.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll take, I'll.
I'll take the lead on this one. I would like to nominate or move to appoint Councilmember Lane, because he is on the California League of Cities Board as the City of Series representative and for voting purposes.
I would second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Before I call for the vote, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item?
Mayor, we need to also include an alternate. They want an alternate on the list.
Oh, and an alternate as well. I was going to amend it after he was done. If I could, I'd like to amend it that Linda Rhino be the alternate since she will be attending. Does her second still stand?
Yes.
Okay. So, I don't see anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for Councilmember Lane as the voting member with Councilmember Rhino as the alternate. We have a second, so can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes for 01.
Thank you. Next, item number B, appointment of a representative to the Measure L Oversight Committee. I can go ahead and handle this one, Mr. Wells. So, this afternoon slash this evening, Vice Mayor Klein and I had an opportunity to meet with two candidates for the Measure L Oversight Committee. The first was Mr. Larry Liu, and the second was Mr. Burrow Condit. Both gentlemen did, I thought were excellent candidates. I think both would serve us well. I think Mr. Liu has a little bit more background with his engineering experience in roadway transportation, but I also believe that Mr. Condit would be a strong advocate for the city of Series as well. I personally wouldn't have an issue with either one of the candidates. In fact, I would love to see, you know, if one, something doesn't work for, obviously one, because we can only pick one, that we try to find a position for one of the other ones if they have some interest. So, I wanted to get Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Klein's comments on this, and then we'll open it up for some discussion.
You know, and, you know, Mayor, after discussion with you, and this being an advisory committee for transportation, which is just starting, I think Mr. Liu's background with, for it being an initial advisory, I do agree with you that, that right now that's what would be suit. But currently, Mr. Liu is on the STANCOG Advisory Committee, Citizens Advisory Committee. And with that being said, if he is appointed to this, he would have to give up his advisory committee position, and I would like to see this council extend that opportunity and give it to Mr. Condit if he so desires to do that. And the other thing too is I would highly encourage Mr. Condit to, next year, to apply to our Measure H Committee because of his background. I think that, you know, with the term limits we have on there, I think he would be suited for that. So, you know, with that, I concur with your recommendation, well, our recommendation of Mr. Liu, but I would strongly ask the council to use Mr. Condit to fill in for Mr. Liu is on the Citizens Advisory Committee on STANCOG.
Okay. Any comments from any other council members? Okay, at this time, I want to, well, I'm going to open it up for the public, for anyone that would like to speak on this. Obviously, you didn't have the opportunity to interview both of the candidates, but if there is someone that would like to speak, I'd be more than happy to hear what they might have to say. Okay, well, seeing none, I'll bring it back. Okay.
I would like to see Mr. Condit have this because of his reputation and everything around the city and being a school board member, being on the Series Recreation a long time ago, and being with, he's a city, Series person, and he's for the kids, he's for the people. And I would really like to have you guys vote for Mr. Condit. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for more discussion or direction. Again, I think both candidates were very strong. If I'm looking at this selfishly, I would say that I would like to see Mr. Condit in a capacity that was in the Measure H where his background in public safety would be a tremendous benefit for us on the Measure H Committee. And Mr. Liu, who's also a citizen of Series and who has extensive experience in roadway projects, in fact, he was the one that had done the alignment, which I found out this evening, of 132 and a number of the projects in the county. And so, I think he has some keen background in that area. Again, I don't think we can go wrong with either one, but if I had my choice, I'd love to be able to utilize both of them in capacities because I think, A, they care about this community tremendously, and unfortunately, we don't have enough of that these days. And it's just unfortunate that we only have one position for this because, again, I think both of them would do an excellent job. So, you know, I can go with any direction, but if I'm looking at their backgrounds, I think Mr. Liu is suited for the Measure L, and Mr. Condit would be suited for the Measure H. But I think you did identify, Vice Mayor Klein, that there is the other Oversight Committee that works through STANCOG that Mr. Liu is currently sitting on, that he would have to vacate, and then that, and then his position would be open for appointment.
Correct.
Now, how does that appointment work? Is it through us, through the COG, or how does that work?
The COG makes the appointment, but only at the council's direction. So, once that position is vacated, they'll contact us, and we would be able to solicit that opportunity before the appointment would be made through STANCOG with a recommendation of this body.
Okay. And just for my benefit, what's the difference between the two? So?
So, Measure L Oversight Committee is a new committee, is charged with providing, you know, the oversight of the expenditures of the program to ensure, similar to our Measure H, that the money is being spent as it was promised to the voters. So, that's the primary purpose of the Oversight Committee for Measure L. The Citizens Oversight Committee is a similar body, but for STANCOG overseeing a lot of the programs, and it's used as kind of the initial vetting place for items that are coming up to the Policy Board for STANCOG. So, items related to transit, road improvements, countywide issues of significance from STANCOG all go through the Citizens Advisory Committee, usually is one of the first committees. There's about four committees. That's one of the first committees that's gone through. It uses the vetting process and to make sure that the public's aware of what STANCOG's mission and projects that are coming through the STANCOG Policy Board.
So, one is focused on the Measure L funds, the other one is most focused on all of the things.
Much more broad, on STANCOG. All the things that STANCOG does.
Probably not Measure L, but all of the.
Yeah, likely there'll be a little bit of overlap just in understanding the relationship between the projects and, you know, what the Oversight Committee is looking at is how the money's actually spent. You know, the Oversight Committee's goal is not looking at what projects are coming, but how was the money spent on those projects, where the Citizens Advisory Committee may have a little more input on what projects should be done and have some direction there on how we interact with the cities.
Okay. And how often do these committees meet? Do we know?
The Oversight Committee tentatively plans for quarterly meetings, as I understand it today. The Citizens Advisory Committee is sometimes monthly, but they end up meeting about nine times a year, eight to nine times a year.
Okay. Well, and if I may interject, and I was going to, I was going to interject this and ask, and ask if you know a little bit more, because I know sitting on STANCOG that every staff report that I get and stuff like that, they do have citizens advisory committees, summaries and their direction and what they pertain to. So, it is a little bit more broader as far as what happens within the county and what projects are going on in the county and the matching funds and different things like that. And they give a little bit more direction on a broader aspect. So, you know, Mr. Liu's been on that for a few years, and this, you know, I think it would be twofold. With Mr. Liu being on this for quite a few years and understanding this, now we're getting into a detail for just Measure L funds, okay, and things like that. I think if, you know, Mr. Condit, you know, would accept our, you know, our, reaching out to him, you know, he'd be involved with STANCOG, but at a broader aspect, and could help in that aspect too, where we still have somebody from the city of Series on that committee?
Okay, so, I guess, is this something, Tom, where we just make a recommendation? Do we have to have a vote, a motion? How does that, how do you want us to do this?
Motion and a vote, yes.
Motion and a vote. Okay. I'll look for directions.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Larry Liu to the Measure L Committee for STANCOG.
Okay. Do I have a second? All right, I'll go ahead and second that. With that, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lane.
No.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 311.
Okay, so, would someone please also reach out to Mr. Condit to see, A, if he's interested in the other STANCOG transportation committee?
Yeah, we'll get the, we'll get the timing from STANCOG as term, you know, there's some logistics to work out there, and then we'll reach out to Mr. Condit once we have that provisioned.
Okay, and then also keep him apprised of the next opening for Measure H, which I believe is next year?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. So, somebody will be reaching out to you, okay? All right, with that, conflict of interest declaration, is there anyone on the council that has a conflict of interest on any of the 10 consent calendar items or one public hearing item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it, well, we'll move to the consent counter. All matters listed on the consent counter are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion?
Number eight.
Number nine.
All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like an item pulled other than item eight or nine? Okay, hearing none. I'll bring it back to the council for direction on the other items.
Move for approval of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 10.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes for 01.
Thanks. Item number eight, Resolution number 2017-063, accepting the Whitmore Avenue Interchange Landscape Project as complete, authorizing the filing of the Notice of Completion and Retention Release to the Contractor. Vice Mayor Klein?
Well, you know, as I read this, you know, towards the end, it states that the Series Public Works will be responsible for all maintenance work and upkeep. And my question is, is that correct? Is it the total interchange? What part is the city of Series responsible for?
City's responsible for the west side of the freeway, and Caltrans is responsible for the east side.
And we're talking west side, north, and south?
West side of, correct. West side of 99, east side of 99, both sides of Whitmore Avenue. So, for the west side, all that is just south. There's no improvements north, because that's the cemetery. The east side, it's both the area in front of KFC, for reference, and the slope adjacent to the Mobile Home Park.
Okay.
Caltrans responsibility.
And if we're responsible for it, is it in the projected for the maintenance in our upcoming budget?
It's in the current budget from a staffing perspective, but as we've discussed at length, that budget is limited and strained. But it is included in the contract now for Howard Training Center to maintain that area.
Okay. And with that, and with it being on east side as responsible as Caltrans, how difficult it is to keep Caltrans abreast and to keep, you know, if we keep our portion up, how difficult it is to keep their portion up?
It should be easy, but Caltrans staff and as indicated, they're in the same budget considerations and challenges that we have. They have, my last conversation with their maintenance supervisor, they have four or five maintenance workers that are responsible for all of District 10, which goes almost to Fresno and up through Stockton. So, there's a pretty significant area for them to cover on 99, so it does take some challenges. And we will work between our Public Works, Engineering, and City Manager's office to continue to put the pressure on them to maintain that facility. Again, it was Caltrans funds that built it, and this was the arrangement that was, you know, considered from day one that they would be responsible for the maintenance. The design was put in place to have as low maintenance of improvements as we possibly can and still have a nice aesthetic, but it will take some work to make sure we stay on their radar screen. We have developed a pretty good relationship with the district director for District 10, his name's Dennis Agar. He and I have been meeting on a regular basis because of our ongoing challenges with the interchange projects, so I expect to leverage that relationship to maintain and ensure that we're getting the best possible service we can.
Well, and with that being said, I guess my last comment is, after what we've just went through with the parks and the maintenance and the upkeep, you know, with it already looking aesthetically pleasing as it is, you know.
Not aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah. I want to make sure that we stay on top of this because of, of the people that travel by and see it and, you know, it reflects on what Series is. So, I just want that on record. Nothing else?
Other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Did you want to make a motion?
Do you want to open up the public?
Sure. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
I move to adopt resolution 2017-063.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero, one.
Thank you. Item number nine, resolution number 2017-064, awarding the construction contract for the Neo Park Landscape Improvements to Sinclair General Engineering Construction, Inc., authorize a 10% contingency, approve the budget amendment, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Councilmember Rhino?
The play area shade sales, what kind of material is that?
I believe it's the same type of material that you've seen in the Rhino Park as well.
On top, on top of the play structure?
It's a type of canvas with some type of polyethylene in it or some type.
Okay. And you're all aware that the wind whipped through and tore that to shreds and it's not been replaced in like six months?
I think it had some help from some people, but yes.
Yeah, there wasn't wind.
It wasn't wind, it was vandalism?
It was vandalism, correct.
Okay. So, how are we going to keep the play area shade sale that we're paying $57,100? How are we going to keep that from being vandalized when we don't have the money to replace it? Is there not some other kind of, excuse me, some other kind of material we could use?
Well, there's other materials, but they're more expensive.
Well, if we, if we can't maintain them and we can't buy more when they get vandalized, maybe we should spend more and put something that can't be vandalized like that.
Well, the difference with Rhino Park and this design, unfortunately, that canvas where it was vandalized was in arms' reach of, of a vandal that reached up there with a sharp instrument and cut those, for what we understand. These shade sales are designed, I don't believe there's access unless somebody shimmies up a pole to get to them with the way they're designed. So, I think the design will limit that vandalism potential for this park versus the design at Rhino, which was just over the top of the play structure.
The picnic shade shelter, is that also made out of the same material?
No, that's a hardscape.
Yeah.
Do we have any kind of covering on the play apparatus like they do at Rhino Park? How they have that one canvas?
I don't remember the plan.
Over which area, I'm sorry?
The play structure. I don't know what the play structure looks like. Is it going to be similar to what's at Rhino Park?
It will be similar, but there, there's no covering over those.
Okay. And then we're purchasing 557 one gallon shrubs for $6,127, 471 five gallon shrubs for $11,304, which will all look wonderful for a very short time. And then when we don't have the personnel to maintain it, it's going to look just as bad as Rhino Park does and our medians and our right of ways. So, why would we spend that kind of money when we don't have personnel to maintain it? I don't understand why, when we went out to bid, instead of doing a really nice landscaped area, which I'm assuming we're doing, why we just didn't do turf that we can maintain and still put the playground in. But to me, it's, if it were me and it was my property and I did, if I could not maintain it, I wouldn't spend that money, especially knowing that when kids come along and they break the sprinklers or we don't have the people to go out there and maintain it, how are we going to replace it?
So, the maintenance for this is not expected to hit this current fiscal year. This project would take about five months to construct and it has 120-day maintenance period included within there. So, the soonest it would be responsible for maintenance would be in next fiscal year, around the July timeframe of 2018. So, our expectation is we would have additional staffing to provide the maintenance for this park next year. But if the council would like to change the design, that's council direction. You can direct us to reject these bids and rebid it, or we can award it and work on a change order to change that from plant material to grass, if that's your preference. We look for council direction. We designed the park to meet the needs of the community and consistent with our Parks Master Plan. This is how we've done similar parks in the past, but if council would like to change that policy and direction, we, we look for your direction.
And I think that we can provide the playground equipment and everything else, but we don't need to put in landscaping that we cannot maintain. To me, it's just a waste of money. And somewhere down the line, if we do get, if we do get more Parks people, because we don't know if we're going to, if we do, then maybe at some point we want to upgrade it. But why would we do that now? To me, it's just a waste of money.
Can, can I make a suggestion? If, if there's some interest, would you be interested if we were to award this contract and then you could sit down with staff and the landscape architect to see about some of these provisions that you might like to modify or upgrade?
No, because I think, I don't think we should have even gone out to bid with landscaping. I think...
Well, how can they read our mind?
Well, they being staff should know we don't have anyone that can maintain it.
So, what do we tell the citizens that have paid for these parks?
We're still putting nice playground equipment out there. We're still putting basketball...
I understand, but how do they know that you don't want landscaping?
What do you mean, how do they know I don't want landscaping?
You said you don't want box trees. That's the first I've heard of it. So, how, I'm just trying to, to come to a compromise here.
Did I say I don't want trees?
No, you said we can't maintain it. So, I'm offering a solution that you can sit down with them and work with them to come up with something that would work for you and you don't want to do that. So, how do we get and bridge the gap? Either you both know and we don't develop the park, or we come with a compromise.
Mayor, you can still develop the park without putting the landscape strips in that we cannot maintain. You can still put all of...
Okay, that's fine. I'm asking, are you willing to sit down with them and tell them what not to put in? That's what, that's all I'm asking.
No, how can we, how could we...
Then how are they supposed to know what you don't want?
It isn't a matter of what I don't want. I'm trying to say that when we went out for bid, we could have still gone out for bid for all of the stuff except for the landscaped area, which includes the plants that we cannot maintain. I'm not talking about trees you're going to put out in the grass. You still put, you still put the grass out there. You're not going to make it not look pleasing. You're just not going to put in, I'll call them flower, I'll call them flower beds.
I understand that, but how do they know that direction if you haven't given that to them?
Why should I have to tell staff who didn't even, I didn't even know they were going out to bid when they've had the discussion that we don't have staff to maintain it? So, why would you put in plants and a dirt area that you can't maintain? That's what I'm saying.
Again, they can't read your mind. They're going off of an approved set of plans that they're bidding. I'm giving you the opportunity to sit down with them and tell them, this is what I don't want you to do. And then we can come back to something that you can live with. I, I don't understand how they are supposed to know...
Who, who is they?
The city staff.
Well, city staff is the one who keeps saying we cannot maintain what we have. So, wouldn't they know that when they are designing a park, that they shouldn't be putting in all these landscape areas if you don't have anyone to maintain it?
Actually, I'm not going to win with this argument with you, but Councilmember Lane?
Mayor, I'd just like to put on the floor right now a motion to approve resolution number 2017-064.
Okay. Before I call for the second, I'll open this up for the public. If anyone would like to speak on this item?
I think we're, we're in need of maybe tabling this whole thing and going back and looking at the feasibility of maintenance. I have to agree with Councilmember Rhino. If we can't maintain what we have, then why are we planning, it's like, I can't keep my yard going because I don't have the water. So, when I, I can't do that, so I put in a new lawn that I can't water and I can't maintain. Doesn't make sense. I'm sure that had this, I'm, I'm really against anything that takes a lot of maintenance that we don't have the staff to do.
Mr. Shepherd, this park is already landscaped.
Is already landscaped?
Yes.
With all of this stuff?
Grass. It is complete grass today. We're adding amenities to it. So, we're only talking about an incremental increase in maintenance.
This is not a brand-new developed park.
No, but you're still, I don't care, grass, you put trees in, but little shrubs take a lot more, they take a lot more water because they're, they're growing. If you've got a bunch of trees out there, or it's all grass, that's the one out by Sam Vaughn.
Shrubbs, yes. Shrubbs actually take less water than grass by a large, large margin. These are all drought tolerant as well.
You've got the grass already.
Correct.
And a tree, and I can see put trees out there, they provide shade. They provide a lot of things, nests for birds and so forth as they grow. I don't know what kind of trees you want to put out there, but let's get the kids' playground stuff in first and then worry about little shrubs and stuff. I, the people in Series seems to me don't care one way or the other if it looks pretty because they don't keep the city clean and pretty. So, but maybe I'm just a little bit skeptical of all the, all the stuff, but I think that get the kids' playground in first. You got the grass, put in some trees, but just doesn't make any sense to me. But I look at it, I don't have any children, but I like kids and I think you have to have a place to play. And nothing better than grass to play on for kids. They can play football, they can do all kinds of stuff on grass.
Hi. I would like the dog park. I'm not sure if this is when to speak about the dog park, but I'm an avid lover of dogs and I hate driving Oakdale Modesto. So, I am encouraging the dog park most definitely. And I would have to agree with Councilmember Rhino about not doing the, the shrubs because that's something we can add in. And as a mom with kids, we don't really look at the shrubs. We care about the grass and the play area and I think that's, that's the most important. Thank you.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear here. I'm not saying I advocate the shrubs. I'm saying if there's something that Councilmember Rhino doesn't like, like the shrubs, can't she sit down with staff and tell them to remove them? That's what I'm saying. So, Mr. Donaldson?
I don't know who this contractor is. So, I mean, I haven't done research on him, see who and what and everything else. So, I just got a note in my bill for, and the water company here is going to give me a dollar for every square foot of grass that I take out. So, now then, I just put a couple of years ago, I redone my whole yards, all new grass, and now then they're going to give me a dollar for every square foot of grass that I take out. Save water. So, I, I don't know what the answer is. Are we planting too much grass that we have to water? Do we not have the water? Do we have the water? Are we paying people now to take the grass out that they planted? They told me not to put over 50% of my yard in concrete. We don't have the water. Save water. I, I don't know. And Azavito, whatever his name is, come out and told me that I had weeds in my front yard and a little area there that I had to leave to make 50% of my yard. It's about maybe eight foot wide and 12, 14 foot long. And I took them flowers and I just sprayed them like this and covered them up. And I didn't know that they was part weeds. And he come out and he said, them are weeds. I said, no, them are flowers. He gave me a ticket having weeds in them. So, I took the lawn mower and I ran over them and, and my wife got onto me then. So, you know what? It's saving money for water or it's saving money for this? I don't know. Mr. Mayor, I have no idea where we at on the grass or the lawn or the parks. There's nothing, nothing, nothing that pleases me any better to see kids and to see a family down there enjoying theirself at a park or at a basketball function or a football function. The, the parents, like this last weekend, I went to the Stanislaus County Fair and watched these kids sell their pig. What a wonderful, wonderful, what a wonderful, wonderful time to see them kids and then see them crying after they take the pig and sell it and it has to go to the truck to go to Saunders to get slaughtered. I mean, but, but the kids have to play with that pig, they have to raise it and they have, what a wonderful time. And then the parents are there for them to sell it. It, it's a great time to see kids and grownups and parents. And that's why I'm so disgusted whenever they put the, the deal around the baseball park and some parent there that's got four kids and, and his one kid is in the loser's bracket and they have to be there every night. Well, you're paying four, five dollars, you're paying, and it's just too much money for them. And so, they're setting out in the outfield and they put a screen to keep their, what, that, that just, oh, you just don't know how bad, that just infuriates me when the parents should be with their kids. That, that, and, okay, I don't know. I, I just, for, for parks and stuff for the kids, that one out there at Smyrna Park, we've already went through that with my dog and I don't even get over on that side anymore. I stay close to Carol Fowler fence and take him that way so he don't pick up dirty diapers. We just have to do something with parks and people so they can be with their kids and have fun and have the kids have a place to play. It's going to cost a little bit of money. So, it's just like the police and the firemen. You, you just have to bite the bullet and pay whatever it costs and get something for the kids. The more they have to do, the less trouble they get into. And that's a fact. That, that is a fact. They have a place to play. Donnie and all of them used to go down to Carol Fowler and play. Now, they got it locked up. You got the baseball park, they used to go down there on Saturday and Sunday and play Indian. Right there at Costa Field. Now, it's locked up. What are we going to do with these kids? Come on. Let's sit down and do something and make parks or do whatever we have to do to give these kids a place to go and play. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm white.
Okay. So, Councilmember Rhino, I guess I'll ask, I'll ask again, you have no interest in sitting down with staff and having them revise the things that you would like to see changed and removed from the park?
I am willing to do that, but I don't want to approve this resolution until I see what the end result is.
Well, yeah, you would have to do that because, I mean, you would do that once you sat down with them, revised it, and then it would come back to us.
I'm fine with that. What I, how I understood you speaking before was, we approve it and then I sit down with them.
Well, I'm not sure what the difference is. I mean, they're going to, they're going to take...
Two options contractually. They bid this project, so you have two options tonight. You either reject the bids or accept the bids. For, we can make changes afterwards through change orders. We can do that with an awarded project. However, we can't make changes prior to award without rejecting the bids and going back out to bid. So, that process of redesigning and rebidding, obviously, there's a cost to redesign and a timeframe for us to do that together and put out to bid. It's probably a three-month process. We did get what we feel are good competitive bids and a bid that's underneath the engineer's estimate. So, from a practical standpoint, that change is a pretty minor change from the landscape design, you know, not from the designer, but from the contractor. It would be far easier to award the contract and make the changes from a timing perspective. However... However, the council would like us to redesign and go out to bid, but from a, from a grand scheme of things, that, that change of removing, moving shrubs and either putting grass or bark, for example, um, that's a relatively easy change that, um, be accomplished pretty easily. We'll say that future costs are gonna be much higher because we're getting a benefit of a million-dollar project here versus removing the plants today, saving thirty thousand dollars. If we plant those shrubs in the future, it's gonna cost a lot more than thirty thousand dollars. But, I mean, that, again, council can provide direction you'd like us to.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm listening to all aspects of this, and so here's my comment. Right now, it's already landscape of grass, okay? So I, I do understand Councilmember Rhino's argument on this thing, and I do understand your thing. So I would like to ask Councilmember Lane, because I would like to second his motion, okay? If he was willing to put in, um, in his motion that a change order be put in place to remove the one gallon and the five-gallon shrubs, so the change order would, 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 after we do this, the change order would go to remove this, move the shrubs for this park, and then we move forward.
Tom?
I think City Manager pointed out correctly the options before you tonight. Uh, I would not recommend that you, uh, make that addition to the motion just because it would be in conflict with the public contract scope.
But yet, we can make the motion and we can second it and then be done with it and then turn around and ask him to make a, make a change order?
He, yes. That's, you can't condition... Okay, because it doesn't assume, change order might not take place. But to make the award, you have to do it on the specs that were bid before you tonight.
You can't condition the award. The, the public contract code unfortunately is very specific. Um, you either award it based on what they, they bid, otherwise reject it and we redesign it. But at the same time, your, your direction is clear. Um, if that's what the council would like us to do, we will... Any change order requires a negotiation process.
So, so here, 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 here's the thing. I will second Councilmember Lane's motion, okay? With the understanding that staff understands that I would like to have a change order put in place. Can we do that?
I think what you say, what you would wanna indicate...
But I can't put that on record until after it's over or what?
No, you, you, you would wanna indicate that you'd like to get, get, get together with staff and potentially, um, revise or, or...
Correct. I mean, all, all that you, so again, the motion is consistent to approve the resolution. That's all that we need. You can separately, as individuals, ask us to investigate that or council can give us direction on, to investigate that item and bring, if you'd like, bring the item back, however you'd like to do that, but again, it can't be part of that motion because we can't...
But there is no guarantee that once we approve this bid that they would be willing to do a change order and not do the shrubs and do anything else that we wanted to do, correct?
Well, I mean, we, we have the ultimate authority on the contract to administer the contract. However, they bid it and they assumed a certain, um, you know, profit margin and everything on the basis of that project, so we can't guarantee that the savings would be a zero for those line items because they bid, you know, on the basis of providing some of that information. So all that we can say is that we would negotiate with them the contract change order to meet the change that the council, you know, is directing, and but we can't promise you that those line items would be zero, again, because of the way the bid was set up. But we can begin that negotiation process to see if we can come to a solution that solves, um, the challenges that, that the council is indicating.
You sticking with the motion or you...
Well, I understand where Mr. Wells is going, and this park has been on the drawing boards and, and been in front of us for at least a year right now. So I will, I will continue with my second, and then I will get with cities, with, with the staff afterwards and tell them my, and, and express my wishes. So I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
No.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes three-one-one.
Okay, before we leave this item, um, I'd like to give direction to staff. Uh, can you, if, if landscaping of parks is, I didn't realize it was gonna be this big of an issue, but if there's this much of an issue associated, can you make sure that the consultant that's working on the general plan update, um, make sure that we have very detailed things? If this council does not want shrubs in parks, then we probably should take and make sure that we focus on what we want our parks to look like. Uh, because again, I, I don't fault you for this. You're taking what the, a design professional landscape architect is having you do, and if that's not what we want, then we need to give you direction as to what that is, so...
General plan, obviously that's one item that we can consider. The other thing we could bring back would be the Parks Master Plan, right? So this, this board...
Either one.
This council approved of Parks Master Plan that included, you know, the, the types of amenities that we included in there. It doesn't get down to the detail of the number of shrubs or how, but, you know, we've been using that similar landscape architectural and theme for the last few years. Um, so if there is a change, I think the Parks Master Plan would be a, a place to capture it and maybe we set policy in the general plan to purify that consistency.
Okay. Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening, public hearing. We have one item, public hearing to consider Resolution Number 2017-062, a new schedule of fees and charges for the city facility and park rental rates.
I'll be presenting that this evening, uh, your mayor. Unfortunately, uh, Ms. Ferris was called away on a, a business emergency. It's amazing how it rains when it pours, the, uh, had some challenges with the aquatic staff, and so Ms. Ferris is teaching some swim lessons this evening. Um, not what she expected her Monday afternoon to look like, but, uh, that's what happens when, uh, several people in the line don't, uh, don't make it to work for various reasons, some not planned, um, and other issues. So anyways, uh, so this is a, a follow-up to last meeting. Uh, we're updating the, uh, fees and rental rates for the city facilities, Legion Hall, two community centers, um, both large assembly, small assembly, as well as all of the facilities in the parks and their abilities to be rented. Uh, we've updated the, the staff report and the, um, study to reflect the comments made by, uh, this council at the last meeting, and, uh, we look forward to any questions you may have, and, uh, we are, um, available to address any of those issues.
Are there any questions of staff?
No, I'd just like to say, um, I think, I think it, uh, relooking at, at it, I'm glad we did because I think the numbers are closer to what it should be, looking at the different sizes and that sort of thing, you know, as far as from the lions' cupboard area and some of the other areas, so I'm glad to see that's out a little bit more. It's not a lot more, but it makes sense to be a little bit more with, um, amenities that, and the people that, that, uh, facility could take, so I'm happy with the report. And really, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Vice Mayor Klein?
Well, uh, not being here when, when this first became to the council, uh, you know, I'm happy with the report. I did have some correspondence with, uh, Ms. Ferris today, uh, you know, knowing she's, she will be out and things like that. But for future reference, you know, for me, uh, one of the things that was a little bothersome was the way that was a comparable rental rates. Um, you know, things were compared for, um, the city of Folsom, um, the, um, I'm trying to, trying to think of where the other ones were, uh, Folsom, Livermore, uh, Roseville. You know, when people look at, at renting a facility, they look within a certain square miles, you know, let's say twenty-five to fifty miles square, square miles when they wanna rent a, rent a facility. So, you know, in the future, when we start comparing things, I would like to, to see a more of a comparable thing. And, and Ms. Ferris did explain that she, she did, uh, uh, compare them to a, a likable size and, and, and type of, of, of venue. But, you know, when, when people come to the Series Community Center to, to rent a facility, they're comparing us to things like, uh, the McKinry, McKinry Mansion or a place in Turlock or, you know, a, a different locations within a certain mile radius. So, you know, I would like to, uh, in the future, see a little bit more of that because that's what we're really competing against for, for rental. Uh, I think the, the city staff has been doing a good job. Um, I, I look at, uh, the, uh, rental, rental, uh, occupancy for this has grown over the years, so city staff has been doing an excellent job. So, uh, you know, overall, I am pleased with the, uh, with the staff report.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, this time I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the new schedule of fees and charges for city facilities?
Just for the facilities or is that for the kids playing baseball out there to raise another fifteen dollars for the kids to play?
Just, just for the facilities.
Just to rent twenty-two hundred dollars to rent this for a night with a...
This or some of the picnic areas at Somerana Park?
At Somerana Park?
Yeah, and some of the parks.
And anybody can rent that from Atwater, Merced, or...
Anyone can.
Whenever I go by there on Saturday or Sunday, I see a lot of license plates from Atwater and Merced and...
Yes, and anyone, and it's a...
And, and music and, and Spanish music and, and everything, you know what I mean? And I can hear it from my house whenever they start playing with Big O speakers and everything, so...
So this was, this was an update of our fees?
What? I'm sorry.
An update of our fees.
On your fees?
Correct.
Okay. Well, charge them if their music goes so loud, okay?
We'll send them your way. All, all right, um, at this time, I will bring it back to the council for direction. Move to adopt Resolution 2017-062?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes four-zero-one.
Thank you. We have no new finished business, um, discussion items and councilman referrals. Is there anyone that was on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Okay, hearing none. We will move to reports. Uh, I have nothing to report. Uh, Councilmember Rhino?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Uh, I do believe that this Tuesday is the last of the Concerts in the Park series, uh, tomorrow night, and so, uh, I would hope that, you know, we get a little bit more attendance than we had last week. Uh, we did pretty, the, the Concerts in the Park series did pretty well, uh, and then it was pretty dead last week. And so, uh, this will be the last one, and I won't take anybody else's thunder, Mr. Wells. But, you know, supposedly, or the understanding is that Senator Canela is to be in attendance tomorrow night. Uh, there's going to be, uh, a presentation about Ace Train...
Correct.
Uh, extended out to him and things like that, so he will be there, and so during intermission, there will be a little discussion about Ace Train.
That's it. Councilmember Lane?
Nothing.
Okay. Suzanne? Tom?
No further, Mayor.
Toby?
As Councilmember Klein mentioned, the Ace Train Celebration, um, representatives from ACE will be here with a, with a booth and informational items, uh, as well as some little area for kids to take pictures with, uh, with a mock-up of the Ace Train and a presentation, uh, to Senator Canela and thanking him for his efforts of getting, uh, the Ace Train to Series, which is a pretty exciting... Councilmember Klein and I met last week with Dan Cog and staff from, uh, ACE to talk about the, the planning and the long-range efforts to get that train here to Series, which we're very excited about. Um, also, uh, the SRWA, Stanislaus Regional Water Authority, has a big meeting on, um, eight-three, August third, that Councilmember Lane and Mayor Viera will be attending, which will be, um, a pretty big day in the, the life of that project, releasing the overall size of the project and, uh, proposed estimated construction costs and really get into the process of where the rubber really hits the road in terms of the cost of facility and how it's going to impact, uh, both cities, the cities of Turlock and Series, so, uh, that's a big deal. Also, one on your calendars, the council, the, um, Bands, Brews and Barbecue at Whitmore Park is scheduled for August eleventh and twelfth, Friday night and Saturday, so, uh, that's coming up. Um, also, just wanted to mention the fire up in Mariposa. I think most of everyone's aware, we did send an engine up there for support, um, and that, uh, that crew is, uh, last reported doing well. That fire is at seventy-six thousand acres as of this evening, fifty percent contained, so it looks like they're starting to get the upper hand on that fire, but, uh, sixty-three homes were lost in that, uh, fire, so, uh, pretty big deal for that area. I know Councilmember Klein services that area, and, um, there's a lot of folks in our area who know people there, and it's been a pretty big deal. So I just wanted to offer my thoughts and prayers for the folks up there as they recover in that, uh, you know, uh, difficult time of losing property and possessions, so, that's it.
Tom?
Nothing.
Daryl?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder again that, uh, Fourth Street is still open for business. Um, it looks like we got most of the underground done this past week, and they'll be doing grading this week and starting next week.
When do you think it'll be reopened again? When's the target?
The, the street or the actual?
Complete, complete, done.
Complete. We're shooting for first of November.
Okay, okay.
But it'll be open before that. I mean, that complete, that's landscaping's all in, everything is buttoned up. Um, we'll have access and, um, you know, you can be able to drive down there sooner than that because there'll just be work scheduled, uh, throughout that process, so...
Okay. Brent? I know you're hiding behind the board there.
I think this works. Just wanted everyone to join us next Tuesday, um, National Night Out, Whitmore Park, from six to eight.
Okay. Rich?
City Manager Wells kinda took my thunder there, thank you. Uh, I was just gonna give a very similar update. Uh, we've been hearing from the crews every day. I heard from Cal OES, uh, and the County Fire Wardens Office today. Uh, they, uh, heard from the airbase, uh, air bosses and communications coordinators at the airbase where our engine is, is operating. Uh, they had a lot of compliments for our crew and our equipment that's there. They said they're doing a real good job making sure all the helicopters and planes and, uh, meta-flight type of helicopters that are coming and going. Um, they're making sure that they're getting in and out safely and that, uh, they're also providing, they were providing structured protection for the actual, um, facility itself. Uh, so we've heard from them, they're doing great. Um, they've been working fifteen to eighteen-hour days every day, uh, and then they sleep either in a trailer or on the ground, uh, at the, uh, at the facility there or at the Mariposa Fairgrounds, so, um, they're working very hard, um, and representing as well, so, that was all, thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy? I think? All right, well, thank you, and I, I wanna thank the firefighters and all of you for helping, and, and also wanted to, uh, reach out to Jeff and say, I appreciate the article that you did. Um, and, uh, it sounded like the, um, the interaction with our public safety people was very well received, and it's always nice to read about that. And, uh, and again, I wanna thank both of, uh, both you for, uh, you know, what influence you might have had, uh, there because obviously it's a portrayal of our city, and I appreciate when, um, the feedback that, you know, Jeff gets from someone that, um, you know, on television that talks about how easy we were to work with, uh, that, that's very appreciative, and, and, and I wanted to thank you for that. So with that, uh, I will move to adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be Monday, August fourteenth at six PM. Thank you.